Everyone, thank you so much for your patience. We were holding interviews for our vacant board members seat. So that took a little longer than expected, but we appreciate your patience and appreciate you all being here. So we are going to begin with a salute to the flag in a moment of silence. Roll call, please. Mr. Dietrich?
Here.
Mrs. Donahue?
I am here.
Mr. Elling?
Okay, sorry.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Mr. Knob?
Thank you, mommy.
Mr. Coke? Ms. Lynch? Mrs. Smith, here. Four members present. First of all, the board held an executive session this evening from 5:33 PM to 6:06 PM to discuss legal matters. We have no presentations this evening. No one has signed up to speak. So we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I wish to extend a heartfelt thank you to our faculty, staff, and administration for all of their efforts in a successful school opening. I have been able to get out to all nine schools across the past two days and check in with staff. And without a doubt, this was the best first day of school since 2019. Thank all of you for your contributions and doing that and getting ready. Just, I don't know, I know there's all the administrators are here tonight, but it just in talking with all of you, it just seemed like a really good, good start. It felt a lot different than the last two years. One special announcement, Keystone Cares Reading Under the Lights events will take, take place next week in two locations. At Bucktown High School at the Dwyer Memorial Field on September 6th, starting at 6:30, our event will kick off there. As well as the next evening on September 7th at the Don Malinak Stadium, again at 6:30. Lots of free books for our students and any, any children in the community are welcome to attend. There'll be snacks and guest readers and just kind of our mascots will be there. So a kind of a family reading night under the lights in the stadium. Families are encouraged to bring their beach towels or blankets and sit down and read a book on the field under the lights. And I know that a little later in our, our agenda, there are a couple of items related to our business manager. And I just wanted to take a moment, even though Susan's not with us this evening, she's watching her daughter play tennis. And I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank Susan Blush and a heartfelt congratulations on her new career opportunity. Susan has been with Keystone Central in the role of business manager for almost 10 years now. And it will not be an easy task to find someone to fill her shoes. I have always found Susan to be a wealth of knowledge with school finances. And of course, she's been very helpful in providing background and context to me as I came into the, the district. Susan will be with us a few more weeks and we have been actively working on a transition plan. That some of that will be sharing with you a little later in the meeting. So again, thank you, Susan.
Short and sweet tonight?
Short and sweet that this crew would like to get home and watch the Penn State game.
So we will move on to our committee reports, curricular, co-curricular. Elizabeth is not, anybody want to cover that?
Think I can. So we were, where's Patty? Patty, you took the notes for me. Can you refresh my memory? I wasn't ready to.
Well, let's, we'll move to facilities and then we'll come back to you.
Yes, we met last week, last Tuesday, the 23rd, I guess it was. And the main topic, we had about three or four items on our agenda. The main topic was presentation by Jeff Straub, the architect from Crabtree Royal Ball and Associates. He brought a presentation for the committee based upon some preliminary review and evaluation of the Liberty Curtain School Building. He gave us a really good overview of the, of what could be done. If we decided to go in that direction, he, he talked about renovation of the building, some different plans for that, what that would look like. He also gave us some, some different floor plans as to what it would look like to actually do new construction and, and rebuild the, build a new school rather on that same site. In the future. He talked about what it would look like with two grade levels for each or three grade levels for each and gave us a very nice presentation. Gave us some numbers as to the increase of the cost of the construction, which has, as like everything else has skyrocketed here in the last year or two. And actually renovation costs are almost as much as the cost of doing new construction. So the committee had a long, lengthy discussion about the different things that he presented to us. And we had tentatively set a meeting for next month with, so he can come back, bring us some additional information. We asked him for as far as enrollment and some other numbers and to present what basically what he showed us to the entire board and get some feedback from the other members. And also open it up to the public to see what they, what they think about. Is being presented and what, what they think we might get their opinion on what we might want to, what direction we might want to go. So along with that, we are, we also talked about, as you'll see in the later here, I think maybe, maybe not tonight, but we went ahead and Woodward School Needs a New Water Heater. So we went ahead, I guess we had given tentative approval to do that because of the price change and we had to do it before next week. So that has to be done, obviously, to be replaced. We were also given an update on the summer projects of which we have had many. And most of them, Rob Pacella tells us they are in good shape. Most of them are completed or 95% of completed in completion. There are a couple, a couple of things that are still because of shortage of materials and so on, some fencing and some, some other items that are yet to be done and will be done in the near future. And we also received an update, updated version of the 10-year plan that we've been working from for the last couple of years. And there are a couple of things that are still on there that, that we have talked about and still need to be completed. So our next meeting will be September 27th at 1:30 and so that's it.
So we'll move back to curricular, co-curricular. We do have Elizabeth and we do have Wayne now. Everybody, welcome Wayne back. We have, so Elizabeth, are you ready to present for curricular?
Oh, I will do my best. It was such a wonderfully done meeting. There was so much information, the minutes, which are a condensed version of everything that was discussed is incredibly long. So be that as it may. I, I don't even know where to start, Dr. Martin. There were so many things that we've talked about. Is there anything that you feel out of everything that's on the minutes? That you feel are like, should be the highlights?
Sure. I think under our Career and Technical Center program updates, Mr. Lynch, our director, explained that we're working further into our teacher preparation program. That articulation, I'm sorry, not an articulation agreement. The program did not exist in Pennsylvania until we applied for it as a district. And so that's been approved at the state level. And our goal is to continue to build the curriculum for that program and work in connection with Commonwealth University so that we can grow our own teachers. We do have an early childhood program that's been well established for a long time, but outside of early childhood education, there were no other educational programming in Pennsylvania for that. So we, we did apply for that and I know that PDE, I did meet with, since we met, I did meet with Acting Secretary of Education Eric Hegarty. And he's also very interested in helping school districts continue a process by which we can encourage more folks into the education profession based on the teacher shortage. And so there was an update on that, along with the potential for an emergency medical services program that we're looking into. Kurt started the process for that, but it's a long process, as well as our business education programs that we have. The new curriculum has been underway with Megan's direction. And there's some thought process there that we would look at moving at least a portion of our business program into a career and technical center program. It wouldn't cost us anything extra to do that, but it would give some students some additional opportunities with articulation agreements and so forth. So there was that, there was just an update to the curriculum cycle. Megan has begun to lead the group into the rewriting of the health and PE curriculum over the summer. And they're hoping to have a draft of that in October to the Curricular Co-Curricular Committee. And the science curriculum writing will begin in the fall. And then there were two other key things. One was the draft policy for lesson plans that you'll see on tonight's agenda for first read. And we did talk about an overview of the policy, the why, and the supports that are in place for that. And based on the conversation, there was an adjustment made to the draft policy before it was on tonight's agenda. And then the last thing was our indoor guard and majorette proposal was to add fifth graders to that activity. There was some rich discussion about the age of the students and the programming. And based on some requests of the committee, Stephanie Ford did work with Stephen Hayfley and made some adjustments to the program. Specifically outlining how the older students would mentor the younger students and the supports that would be in place. And I did receive, receive an update on that. Last thing was Mike Hall wanted to make us aware of the shortage of PIAA officials across the state, but specifically in our area. And that shortage may end up having an impact on some of our contests that needing to be rescheduled or canceled. So that was a lot for, that was a condensed two hour meeting.
Yes, and, and thank you. I defer to Dr. Martin on these because even though I'm in the meeting and I completely understand where they're going, she can articulate it so much better than I can because that's her profession. So I deeply appreciate it, Dr. Martin.
Thank you. I'm cheated by using the minutes, so.
That's what I'm saying. If you look at that condensed version, I mean, we're there almost three hours, I think. It was, it was extensive, but I want to let everyone know that if you want to learn about the district, all these great things, please come to these committee meetings. The, the staff, when they explain these and do presentations and we have an animated discussion, extremely interesting, extremely valuable. So thank you all very much.
So move on to our reports section. We have our treasurer's report. Do any board members have any questions or comments on that this evening? All right. And then we have our first enrollment report for the year. Of course, this is probably going to change.
Well, I, I know I talked to Mr. Eevee today. We've been getting students back from some outside cyber schools into our cyber school and some students from our regular education program into cyber school. So I actually may ask if we could get a second enrollment report from Tammy Mills next week, just as a second update, because it's been constantly evolving.
Yeah, the first couple of weeks, it definitely does.
It does. So just so you know, the, the numbers were obsolete the minute she sent the report.
Okay. And section, section G, Board Business. It's that time of the year for us to elect and vote for PSBA officers. So you'll see the names of the PSBA, the candidates. And I'm assuming the links are to their resumes and their backgrounds. So if you want to check them out before next week, so we can have some, a vote on how we want our votes to go for PSBA. And then we also are going, we need to approve the interim business manager with Susan leaving.
Yeah, and I noticed there's not an attachment there. We had an attachment and I think there was a, your name was spelled wrong. And so I haven't seen the new attachment. I did send that to the board for full review and the full contract will be posted Monday evening with the voting session. Agenda that will be public Monday evening. Yeah. So I did want to take a moment to introduce Jeff Wall. Mr. Jeff Wall is, his name is on that PASBO contract. So this would be a, a contract with the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials. And Jeff is a retired business manager from the Penns Valley Area School District, along with Ambridge and several other places that you've worked. I know the board had, had a chance to review your, your resume. But with the board's acceptance of the recommendation next week, Jeff would begin some work with us as an interim business manager while we're currently searching for a full-time business manager. And I've had an opportunity to work with Jeff when I was a high school principal. He was the business manager at Penns Valley. And a lot of what I learned about zero-based budgeting and budgeting processes happened when I was a high school principal. And managing and leading all of those different budget codes and accounting for every pencil that went in and out of that building. So administrative team, you can thank Mr. Wall for that, those budget meetings. But I think it's a very efficient way and effective way to, to plan forward and also make sure that, that we have what we need in our budget. So I don't know if any board members have questions about the contract that you saw or any, any concerns that you want to bring forward tonight in public discussion.
No, I think it looks like a good, good solution to our situation here for the next few months until we can get somebody full-time on board. Confident Mr. Wall will fill the role very, very well. So, but glad to have him on board, hopefully.
Yeah, so we're looking for a timeline to have a candidate in, in place by, at our, to vote on at our November meeting. Doesn't mean they're going to start in November. Until then, it looks like the administration team has come up with a plan to help keep things moving. And some duties have been delegated to other people, another positions temporarily, maybe not temporarily, temporarily, we'll see how it goes. The board does absolutely appreciate everybody's cooperation during this transition. We understand it might be a little bit more work for you, something you may not be totally familiar with or comfortable with. But I know you work as a great team and we certainly appreciate all of your help. And Mr. Wall does come with a great background, so I think he will be a great help. So thank you so much and welcome.
One more thing for the board to, to know that with this transition, Susan Blush held several different roles that the board is required to appoint based on school code. Such a HIPAA compliance officer, a right to know officer and board treasurer. So you will see on, in addition to what you saw in the work session agenda this week on your board voting agenda, you will see our recommendation for appointing some folks in those positions. I would recommend that Jeff Wall as interim be elected as your treasurer. That would again change when we hire a full-time business manager. Mark Condo has agreed to take on the right to know officer, open records officer for the time being with some support from Teresa Carlson, who has been supporting Susan in that role. And then additionally, a HIPAA compliance officer, Tracy Long has agreed to take on the role of the HIPAA compliance officer. So again, in addition to tonight's work session agenda items, I plan to add those agenda items for next week's consideration.
They're on the person.
Oh, are they on there now?
They're on there already.
Okay, thanks Tracy for catching.
Tracy's on the ball tonight.
We did discuss putting it on there now.
Yep, it's on there. Okay. All right. Dr. Martin is looking at attending a couple of conferences this year. And just because of distance and everything, she would like them, the board to approve them. And so the first one is the School Leadership Conference in October. And that is paid for by Title II monies.
Yeah, and both conferences are Title II funding, which is for professional development. Those are federal dollars, grant dollars, and we actually have some carryover money, leftover money that needs to be spent before the end of September. If we can carry over some, but we still have some carryover money from the 2122 budget that we'd be utilizing for those.
And then the second one was the IU 10, 11, and 8 conference. And I think these are the ones you felt you would get the most information out of.
Yeah, these are for the fall. There's maybe a couple of others coming this year. I just want to kind of see how the rest of the year plays out with time and, and so forth. I'm involved in several organizations. I'm involved with the Pennsylvania Association of School Superintendents, the Pennsylvania Group. And I do have a leadership role in, in there. I'm on the Professional Development Committee for the State Superintendent's Association. I do also have some responsibilities with AAS through our Learning 2025 group. Those conferences are typically in the winter and this summer coming up. And then the IU 10 and IU 8 conference, obviously that was just something new that they tried to pull together. They have not been able to put that together the last couple of years because of the pandemic, but wanted to get the superintendents together across that region. And the other organization that I'm involved with is the Pennsylvania Association of Curriculum Development Supervision. And I do have a leadership role with that organization as well. So trying to, with, with the pandemic, there weren't a lot of conferences happening, but now they seem to be starting to heat back up, but I can't attend everything. So I'm trying to be selective about what we spend our time or invest our time and money into.
And then the last item in this section is the resignation of Dorothy Bollinger from the Bollinger Law Firm. She's been with us, it looks in her letter, for 24 years. So she's finally going to rest.
She's going to retire from retirement.
Yeah. So any questions on any of those items? Moving on, we have our Policy 111, the lesson plans. This is the first read. Any questions for board members on that? I know this was covered pretty extensively in curricular, co-curricular.
If I, if I may just make a quick comment on this.
Sure.
Oh, thank you. I want to thank all the folks that put this together and it was a very, very interesting conversation. And the more the employees explained to us about the lesson plan and trying to keep everything consistent while still giving the instructor of the class, the teacher of the class, you know, enough flexibility, you know, to make it their own a little bit. These lesson plans, I came in with a very negative attitude simply because I'm surrounded by teachers. And, but after they explained and then all the different steps that they've taken and how they've integrated different people from different grades. And we have the substitute teachers coming in. I feel highly confident. If any of the board members have any questions at all, please, please ask. But after learning all of those different pieces of this. You know, the old snow days, not really going to be happening in Keystone Central School District. So I want to thank everyone for putting this together. I feel really great about it.
All right. So then we have our minutes from last month's work session and voting sessions and then the curricular, co-curricular and facility committees. Any questions or comments on those? Under business, we have our monthly bills for payment. Any questions on those? And then you'll see the agreement with Successful Practices Network and the amount of $8,200 for facilitation of the district comprehensive plan and professional development for our school leaders. This is paid for by Title II grant.
Those dollars were specifically set aside to help with our comprehensive plan. The last time we did a comprehensive plan required by PDE was 2019. It's a three-year plan. However, deadlines were pushed back for schools across the state because of the pandemic-related challenges. So our comprehensive plan is due to PDE in March of 2023. So this fall, I'll be pulling together a group of stakeholders in October to start reviewing the existing plan, reviewing some data sets and thinking about future focused education. And so I think that the support of Mike Duncan and the Successful Practices Network will be really helpful in facilitating that process and getting our stakeholder group to really focus on the future of education. And what our graduates will need to be successful in, in the world of work. And we know whatever pathway they choose, whether it's post-secondary, whether it's career, trade, starting their own business, whatever that pathway might be. What are the skills that our students need to be successful when they graduate from one of our Keystone Central High Schools? So I think it's going to be a very, I think it's a very exciting time to involve stakeholders and talk with them about what, what they see the needs of our school district are.
Having been through the process the last time, it is really eye-opening and it's nice to see all the input from the public, stakeholders internally and external. Okay. The next one looks rather interesting.
So Mr. Riley, they need to add some information here for all of you. So a few months ago, Mr. Riley came to me and talked with me about this idea of a vending machine onsite that basically sells recharging kits and charged cells and energy cells. And so once a student would buy the kit, they get the cell and they charge their phone. The chargers expended its energy. They basically insert that into the machine and they get a new charged cell, energy cell for an extra dollar. So it's basically selling charged energy for, for cellphone chargers. Our students could use it. Remember, people visiting our, our schools to after-school events could have access to it. The district does not have any upfront cost in this contract, but would receive 15% of any of the sales that will be made. We would put those dollars into the same fund that we've been using for other vending machines. So anytime that there's been extra funds raised because people buy a soda or snack out of a vending machine, this would function in the same way. It is a three-year agreement. And Nick, would you like to say anything, if you do, you just need to come to a microphone, about the uniqueness of this? And why, while he's coming to the microphone, I just want to let you know that we did not consider this in any of the other buildings yet. We wanted to, I wanted to see how this pilot program went before we expanded it.
Thank you. I spoke to a representative from the company called Fuel Rod. Fuel Rod is a business out of California. They already have vending machines in a lot of universities, including Penn State. In fact, that's where I met this representative. They also are in places like Walt Disney World, a lot of parks, a lot of airports. I was talking to this representative about possibly the interest. And one of the main reasons we wanted to do it was to try and bring community support, especially in the areas that we were talking about, some of the high-volume areas. As far as around the gymnasium, possibly the cafeteria, and maybe even up at the football field. We talked about this as a pilot program because they have not tried it yet at a high school. So they were, we would possibly be the first school in the United States to try it. I thought that it was certainly something of interest. I thought it was great for our students. This isn't something that we're pushing because I know that we had talked about cell phones. And I wanted to talk to Dr. Martin that this wasn't in an attempt to push the use of cell phones during school. This was more in an attempt to get our students to be able to use cell phones correctly. And these would not always be available, similar to the vending machines and the soda machines, they wouldn't always have access to that. This particular company decided that since it's a pilot program and since it's students, the actual rate that they normally charge at these parks or at universities, they were slicing almost in half. And part of what they wanted to talk about when we had this meeting was it would be a little bit more of a cost, maybe very minimal to parents. They were looking at maybe $1.99, $2.99 per month to get unlimited charges. Because when I spoke to them, I said, that's probably where you're going to see a difference in a high school as opposed to something at a university where students aren't constantly walking by these vending machines. as opposed to something at a university where students aren't constantly walking by these vending machines. That was part of the reason that they wanted to pilot it. Certainly isn't something that we only wanted to just strictly have at Central Mountain. It was more along the lines of if this was a successful program, we could look at putting one at the middle school, putting one at Bucktail, and then hopefully kind of springboarding into Keystone Central was the first program to sponsor this and spearhead it. I would hope that's where it goes, but that's part of what the pilot program is. I think it's a win-win because there is no upfront cost to us. And any of the money that we receive would go into the fund that we are pushing back to students through our PBIS Positive Behavior Support Program. I would like to try it and I just, it was something that we wanted to talk to you about before we move forward with the contract. I don't know if you guys have any specific questions.
Well, I just have a couple. You mentioned that they would, some of the locations. How many actual vending machines would there be? Do you envision in the building? And when would the kids have access to them?
We spoke and, and I told him that I was not comfortable moving forward until this was discussed with the board and something that we could discuss a little bit in more in-depth. His original thing that he talked about was three machines. And we had discussed certain locations, but that's also when he comes on site to take a look at some of the high-volume areas. We did not discuss the football stadium, but I, I thought about if we're really trying to involve the community, either maybe not having three machines down here, having two and putting a third up there, or maybe that they might even be willing to give us a fourth machine and put it up.
The current contract just commits us to two and, and locations to be determined.
So just for my non-tech mind, it's like a portable bank.
So yeah, it's, as soon as you, you get it, it's about this big. It's a cylinder tube. You plug it into your cellphone and within about 15 to 25 minutes, it puts a full charge back in your cellphone. Now, it comes with a portable charger that you can plug in and continue to use that if you want. However, I explained to him that's probably not what our students would do. And once you get the membership, we'll call that, you would go to the machine and you punch in the code with everything. And then you put the old pod in and it spits out a brand-new pod that is already fully charged. One of the things that they did discuss that would fall on us, but more along the lines of maybe some students to be able to do this, which again helps that, is they will pay for someone to stock the machine. Once again, it's no cost to us, but it would be up to us to try and find who that person was. But we have multiple programs right now through the school where our kids are working with custodial, food services. And this would be another great opportunity for them to earn some money by, by doing something that also helps out our school.
Elizabeth, you have a question?
Yes, okay. I, I abso- I will Google this because I'm really, really fascinated by this. I absolutely have never heard of anything like this. Not surprisingly, I don't have a cellphone. Yes, I don't have a cellphone, I know. But do you think that, when you said, I mean, I will Google all this, but a student has to physically be by the machine for 15 to 20 minutes for it to charge?
Elizabeth, if you did not Google this, I would have probably been upset.
I haven't. I got home late today.
The actual machine, that's why they call it a vending machine. So it's similar to if you would get a, a soda at a, at a vending machine. It spits out the, the charge pod and then the, the pod is portable. You don't have to plug the pod in. It plugs directly into your phone. And you can walk around, you can set your phone down, but within 15 to 25 minutes, it completely recharges your phone. He doesn't love to keep me to the 15 to 25 minutes because you, salesmen are like, oh, some, some phones, it takes a little longer, some it takes less. But no, it's a completely portable.
Portable, mobile. Okay, I was thinking the student had to stand there. Okay, my mistake. Thank you. This one's really exciting. It's, I don't know. Thank you so much for bringing this. I think it's great.
Thank you very much. Something new, something interesting. I know.
I hope it really works out. And I, I think it's awesome that, that we're spearheading this project. We'll be the first school in the United States to have it.
Yeah, it'd be great for the kids at, who are after school and don't have time to plug in or get.
We talked about to try and give them access because my own son just texted me a little while ago and only had four minutes on his phone. So hopefully we can, we can help out that.
All right. Thank you. And then the next is a proven agreement with dot-com therapy.
I wish we didn't have to ask you for this service. The one area we are short in starting our school year is in the area of speech and language therapists. So we had already been contracting with the intermediate unit for some services. We had a vacancy of our own. We tried to fill that vacancy. The person that we inter- we interviewed turned us down. We tried to go again and ask them to come and unsuccessful. So not only is the intermediate unit unable to fill their contractual obligation for a speech therapist, we're down one as well. So we had been using dot-com therapy to make sure that we were compliant and providing the services we needed. This is a teletherapy. We do not believe that's the, what we would like to do permanently. It's just going to help us get through until we can find speech therapists. This, there is a shortage of speech therapists across the state, probably the nation. I know regionally, it's also a position that's been very, very difficult for us to fill based on certifications. So we are still actively seeking to, to fill the position. And if we are able to fill it earlier in the school year, then we would ask to terminate this contract.
Any questions from the board members on that?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to question. I, I fully understand because, but if we do terminate the contract, is it, is there going to be a penalty or something?
Not that I'm aware of. Liz, you're the one that talked with them now, just as an as-needed basis. And even dot-com therapy, it was even struggling to get someone into this role. They were still waiting on certification for the person they would hire to fulfill this contract. So it's, it's getting dicey for speech and language therapists.
Makes me wonder if L H U has a program. Probably not, but maybe they'll clean up someday.
They do not. However, we have reached out to the universities that do have that, asking for applicants or recent graduates. We were fortunate enough, last year we, we hired two speech and language therapists. One of them did leave and, and these folks have opportunities to go different places. And so there seems to be also a revolving door in, even across multiple districts.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Moving on to our personnel agenda. In typical leave of absences, you also see the, the change in duties for that we have to do with Susan leaving. Any other questions or smiles volunteers on there? That's always good to see. And more bus drivers, bus driver aids.
We did have two professional resignations, but we are exercising our right to hold those employees so we can get school started. So, and we are actively searching. I believe there were some interviews even earlier this evening to help fill some of those positions.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you. I assume that's what we were going to do as far as holding them to replace them.
Yep, we'll hold until, till we don't have to, or till we can no longer hold. So we've got 60 days from the time of the, the resignation was submitted.
That's a quick question.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I, I know it's really early, we've only been in a couple of days, but maybe at the next meeting, just give us a quick update, like are the bus driver numbers looking better or the substitute teachers looking better? Just that, any update maybe next time and.
Sure. My, well, I can speak to some of that now. I know that our, our bus contractor, Susquehanna Transit is meeting the quota. They're, they're right there. I don't think they have a whole lot of substitute bus drivers. So they're, they're stretched. And I know at times the owners are driving and so forth as well to fill in for, for subs. So again, they're still searching and advertising and seeking bus drivers. As far as, what was your other question? Substitute teachers.
Yeah, any, any word on that?
Tracy, I don't know. Did you have any updates from ESS? I know there were a couple new folks getting their names in.
New folks, but you know, some of the others.
We could use more. There's a small pot, but we could definitely use more. And this has been a recurring problem over the last several years. ESS, our contracted service for substitutes, works with several districts in the area. And I know that we're one of their larger clients and they do struggle to get enough people and they're in the queue to, to get out to us. But we also held, over the summer months, if the board recalls, walk-in Wednesdays. I think our sign is still up outside, although that ended in mid-August. We were very successful at pulling some folks in and helping them with the process of filling out applications. Maybe some folks didn't have access to technology that they required in order to fill out an application and get hired here. We were able to fill, I think, almost all of our paraprofessional positions. Lisa was pretty busy throughout the summer. Do we have any vacancies now? How many? Three vacancies, paraprofessionals, so we'll keep working on that. I know we were able to hire some cafeteria staff and some custodians. I know we're, we're working on finalizing some of the paperwork with those folks. But our support staff positions, I feel, I'm, I, even though we're short on teachers and substitutes for teaching positions, it's our support staff positions that I think are the most challenging to fill and, and keep people. So we're continuing to work in those areas as well. We can't run schools without our support staff. They're, they're absolutely essential to our everyday functions.
Yes, Elizabeth?
Thank you. And since it's on personnel, I don't know if this is the appropriate place to say it, but I want to talk about Susan Blesch, our business manager. Okay, thank you. I, I just wanted to, my relationship with Susan is far different than, you know, she's, she's not my employee or anything like that. But I just want to say how, you know, we're losing an employee to one of the top-rated universities in the country. So if that says anything about her professionalism, what she's going to take to Penn State, what we're losing. I can't thank Susan enough in, in the multiple hours. So wherever you are, Susan, I know you're going to be extremely happy at Penn State. You probably have more time to be with your family. But I just want to let you know that you've always been aces for me. So I always wish you well.
Thank you. And then moving on to our athletic personnel. There's some volunteer positions and game workers there. Couple transfers and a couple resignations. Do any board members have any questions on those? That brings us to the end of our agenda. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I will make that motion.
Holly, look at you seconding it. Reading adjourned.